Good evening and welcome to the regularly scheduled meeting of the Bothell Planning Commission for April 30th, 2014. Call to order tonight's session, and note that all Commissioners are here with the exception of Steve Booth, who is excused this evening. Offer any non-agenda public comments, opportunities for folks that are here tonight to speak to items that aren't on the agenda? See none. We'll move forward to approval of the minutes where we have none. No new business on the agenda. So, at this time, I would like to continue the public hearing on the 2015 Periodic Plan and Code update tonight, the initial review of the economic development element, and I will turn it over to Mr. David Boyd. Welcome, David.
Thank you. Good evening. So tonight, this will be my first session on the comp plan update, my first element. I'll be coming back to you in the future with urban design and helping out with the transportation element, too. So, bear with me. I know you guys are probably better versed on the procedures here than I am. The economic development element is to provide guidelines for maintaining, enhancing, and creating economic activity in the planning area, to develop long-term fiscal stability for the city, to provide employment opportunities, and ensure that citizens have good access to a variety of goods and services. The economic development is not a required element under the Growth Management Act, but the Growth Management Act does have a goal encouraging economic development throughout the state, consistent with the adopted comprehensive plans. So even though it is not a required element, it is one that we have included in the comprehensive plan, that's in the current comprehensive plan, and that we do intend to continue. There are also county-wide planning policies for both King and Snohomish County in the four economic development, as required by, again, by the Growth Management Act. I intended to bring those as a handout tonight, but they will be included in the Appendix A for the overall comprehensive plan. I'm not sure if that's been presented to you yet, but it will be in your next packet on economic, just for reference purposes. So the economic development element contains goals, policies, and actions intended to direct the city's activities regarding the whole spectrum of economic development, again, from creation of good jobs to provision of services and transportation to education. And on that note, on the education note, I did include in the changes a few additional references to economic institutions, and I've just received today a letter from Kelly Snyder of University of Bothell, Washington-Bothel, with some specific additional additions in that regard. So I have those here to put up on the screen, and we'll enter those as an exhibit, include them in your packet next time, and I'm sure she'll be speaking to them herself. So we'll get into that later. One of the key aspects of the economic development element is designation of four different types of activity centers, two regional activity centers, which are distinguished by significant provision of employment, three community activities centers, which provide retail and services for the broader community, six or seven neighborhood activity centers, which provide convenience retail and services for the immediate surroundings. We've added two neighborhood activity centers in the Snohomish County potential annexation area. We already had two that were in the King County area, potential annexation area, which has now been annexed, and then one specialty activity center providing a unique mix of shops and services that appeal to a regional market. So the current and proposed activity centers are shown here, the current graphic on the left, and these are in your packet as well, and the proposed graphic on the right. The current graphic included some centers that were pretty sharply delineated and others that were a little more loosely delineated. We decided to go with a consistent approach. They're still intended to be pretty accurate in terms of the area that they depict, but with more blobular outlines consistently here. Just quickly go through some of the key differences here. The, let me get my mouse to work here. We've also added the Puget Sound Regional Council's Vision 2040 Regional Growth Center, which combines the Canyon Park Regional Activity Center and the Canyon Park Community Activity Center, which straddle I-405. So that's shown in the dashed black line. We've extended, in addition to adding the two neighborhood activity centers in the Snohomish County potential annexation, we've extended the Thresher's Corner Community Activity Center to include the area in the Snohomish County potential annexation area that the county has designated as an urban center. We have moved the University of Washington Bothell campus from the North Creek Regional Activity Center to the Downtown Community Activity Center, consistent with the action that we took in the downtown plan to move the campus from the North Creek subarea to the downtown subarea. And we've included, wrapped the boundary for the neighborhood activity center adjacent to Country Village to encompass Country Village to make the point that planning for those two areas that are contiguous should be done in a gridded fashion. That also is mentioned in the text with regard to the contiguous Canyon Park Regional and Community Activity Centers and Thresher's Corner. It's anticipated that there will be some specific planning efforts for, particularly for the Canyon Park Regional Growth Area Center, but it makes sense, and we thought it would be good to put in the plan that that should be done, that should be integrated with the adjacent community activity centers. So just wanted to quickly go through, touch on each of these activity centers with some photographs to, for, just to jog your memory of what's out there. The North Creek Regional Activity Center, like I said, is being modified to remove the campus, and in recognition of the downtown plan and the significant barrier that I-405 provides there. And so on the right here, we have just a couple of images of the business park, a couple more here. I think you're all probably quite familiar. And it does include some commercial, some retail areas down in the southeast corner, Home Depot and the Staples Center, as well as significant recreation opportunities, which are also, I think, important to note as economic development factors in our economic development. Tournaments held there do help bolster the local economy. The Canyon Park Regional Center, as I said, is also the Regional Growth Center in the Vision 2040 plan, and should be, along with the adjacent Canyon Park Community Activity Again, there is a mix of some retail or mostly restaurant uses within Canyon Park, but although it's zoned for residential development, that has not transpired, and we are short on our growth targets for Snohomish County. So as we get in, as you get into the land use section of the code, there'll be a discussion about bolstering Canyon Park and perhaps some other areas in Snohomish County to help us meet those growth targets. Again, this is quite extensive, extending over to 26th here. And then, moving on to the community activity centers, the downtown community activity, of course, center is anchored by the historic commercial core, and we've now wrapped in the growing, rapidly growing UWBCCC campus. In the draft that you've received tonight, we've incorporated several of the goals and policies from the downtown into the economic development element. And I know you're all quite familiar with the downtown subarea, so I didn't include any further images of that. The Canyon Park Community Activity Center includes the Canyon Park and Canyon Park Place Shopping Centers, along with adjacent commercial development, and like I stated before, is part of the Regional Growth Center in the Vision 2040 plan. And then the Thresher's Cor, on the other side of the Canyon Park Regional Activity Center is the Thresher's Corner Community Activity Center, which extends from the north edge of the Canyon Park Regional Activity Center well into our potential annexation area. And it was one of, I think, nine areas that Snohomish County designated as urban centers two, three years ago, and their urban center actually extends even a little bit past our potential annexation area. So the images on the bottom here are in unincorporated Snohomish County now, within our potential annexation area, and the image on the upper right is basically the entry to Bothell going across Maltby Road, 524. So moving on to the Neighborhood Activity Centers, this is the Meridian 228th Center, has a small strip retail component there. This is another area that's being considered for additional growth to help meet our Snohomish County targets, although I think the focus is going to be more on the Canyon Park area. There is a large area of federal land to the southwest of here, just to the left in this image, that may become available for redevelopment, so there is an opportunity for perhaps some additional commercial development and significant residential development to support, help support this little smaller commercial center. The Bothell Everett Highway 240th Neighborhood Activity Center, also known in our municipal code as Red Barn Village Special District, and in the current comp plan as, it was studied as Lake Pleasant Village, with this example of how it might redevelop, since that has now largely been redeveloped with the Safeway Center, we propose removing this from the economic development element here. So here, there on the bottom is the Safeway Center, and the one area, the one corner that hasn't redeveloped is the northwest corner of 240th and Bothell Everett Highway, shown in the upper left. But there are strong guidelines now in the subarea plan that directed the development of the Grease Monkey incorporating some elements of the Red Barn structure that was there, and the adjacent dental building. So we feel that that is covered in the municipal code now. Then moving to the south, two neighborhood activity centers that were already designated in the comp plan but are now within our city limits, this one at Wanita Woodville and 160th. Also to the north is Brickyard Road. So there has been some recent development in this area, and some potential for more. So I think this is potentially one of the larger, more active neighborhood activity centers in the city, in the annexation area, and then a smaller one at Wanita Woodville Way and 145th, which does have some new development that isn't shown in this Google Earth image yet, a new King County Human Services facility. But there is some commercial neighborhood business-owned land, as well as some adjacent multifamily-owned land, so there's a potential for a small neighborhood activity center here. Similarly, in the Snohomish County annexation area to the north, this is at Filbert Road in Wine Sap, and there is convenience retail to the west, and a small strip commercial mixed use with some commercial on the lower level to the right here, and again, some adjacent land available for multifamily development and potentially some additional commercial development. And on the east side of the Snohomish County potential annexation area is another smaller area with neighborhood business zoning on the side of this church and adjacent properties, and multifamily zoning to the east. So again, opportunity for some modest commercial development here. And then, as we looked at the map and saw the distribution of these neighborhood activity centers, and part of the idea behind the Neighborhood Activity Center is to provide an option for people to be able to do some convenient shopping by foot or by bike without necessarily getting in their cars. And there was a gap in the northeast section of the city, or actually, I guess, the east, northeast section of the city, and we decided to put out there for consideration this intersection of 45th and 228th, again, within our Snohomish County potential annexation area. There's a new regional park just outside of the potential annexation area to the left in this picture, to the east of this corner here. There are a couple of the corners of this intersection that are already developed with fairly recent housing developments, but there is some potential for some commercial development on this site. So that's, we decided to run that one up the flagpole for your consideration. And then the Country Village Specialty Activity Center, again, this is an area that has been considered, maybe not, well, we'll see when we get into the land use element, how strongly that's being considered still for some addition of housing within that zoning, which is currently just straight community business zoning. And again, the idea, introducing the idea that this be zoned in an integrated fashion with the adjacent Neighborhood Activity Center. And then also for your consideration, this is one graphic that's in the, in the current comprehensive plan, and there's a brief mention of it in the text of the comprehensive plan, for a, essentially a business circulator loop to link downtown Bothell with both of the regional activity centers, North Creek and Canyon Park, also passing by the campus. But it, so it was introduced in the comprehensive plan last time in the economic development and urban design elements, but there really was no development or even any discussion of how this might be implemented, what agencies might do it, whether there'd be opportunities for public-private partnerships. So it raised a question whether this is still a viable notion, and especially in light of the current cutbacks in transit service, or recent and impending cutbacks. But we wanted to give you a chance to discuss this, and I think we're actually leaning towards keeping it in there as something that might be a possibility in the future, especially if we look at what some other communities are doing, teaming up with businesses, some of the private circulators that have been introduced, well, in the region and in other parts of the country, whether there might be some opportunity there. But if we do keep it, it definitely should be also incorporated into the transportation element, and I think a little more discussion of, and direction on how to, perhaps, how to pursue this. So that brings me to the end of my presentation. Entertain any questions. I've got the text that I provided, that I can put up on the screen for a review of that. I would welcome any feedback on any additional analysis or changes, additions that you'd like to see for the follow-up session on economic development, which is scheduled for May 21st. And then, when, at the end, you'll continue the hearing to May 7th, where we'll have scheduled a joint session with the Landmark Preservation Board on the Historic Preservation Element. And that's, that is that. So.
Thank you, David.
Any questions?
Any questions for clarification or specific comments to the presentation that will support our discussion and deliberation?
Yeah, just a real quick question. The ED3, University of Washington area, does that include Beardsley Village, the new development that's under construction now?
Yes. That was, that was also captured in the adjustment of boundaries when we did the downtown plan.
Excellent, thanks.
Yeah, Patrick.
Taking a look at changing the designation for UW-Bothell and for Cascadia, reading through the definition, it seemed like it most aligned with a regional center. What was the main reason for moving it to a community-based downtown activity center?
Well, one was just to be consistent with the downtown, the downtown plan and the change that we made when we initiated the downtown plan of altering the boundaries to include it. And at that time, it was done mostly because we felt it was important to reinforce the connections between the campus and downtown. We thought there actually was a, already a stronger connection between campus and downtown than there is to the, to the business park, largely because of the freeway as a barrier. So that was the thinking there. It's true that the campus is an employment center, as well as an educational institution, but we think it fits, it still fits within the definition of a community activity center, and to some degree, it's somewhat semantic. We realize that there's, there are connections not only between the campus and North Creek Business Park, but between the downtown businesses and North Creek as well. So that was the thinking.
Yeah, Mike?
Yeah, I just had some questions about clarifying and making sure I understood it. So in terms of regional, community, and neighborhood activity centers, I saw the definitions on ED2 and ED3 and 4, and is it, is it just an issue of scale? Is it that, you know, regional is the biggest, it has the most dense zoning, it has the, you know, that's where you're going to find your large strip malls, and then, you know, going down to community and neighborhood is just smaller zoning, or is there something more?
The biggest distinction with regional activity centers is they are significant employment centers. So while we envision that downtown and some of the other community activity centers will have some office development, the focus is on shopping opportunities for the broader community and residential development to support that, whereas the regional activity centers are really focused on employment, and that's what we, what we have there now. Like I said, we're looking at ways to introduce some housing there to make them a little bit more integrated communities, but they'll always be, have a strong emphasis on significant employment.
I see. And then, what about the difference between community and neighborhood activity centers? Is that just, community is bigger and denser? Or is this a characteristic?
Yeah, it's partly scale and partly the reach that they have. So we see the community activity centers as drawing business from throughout the city, whereas the neighborhood activities are more convenience centers for the immediate neighborhood.
I see. And then, in terms of how that's reflected in zoning, is that, you know, we just zone, zone them differently, and so for a regional activity center, it just has a zoning that would allow it to have, you know, a large Safeway or something, whereas a neighborhood activity center, you just, zoning-wise, wouldn't be able to build a Safeway there? And so we would just naturally expect less employment?
Well, yeah. The employment is mostly coming in through the office and professional zone, and then the larger retail, like the large Safeway Center, that's generally happening in general commercial zones or sometimes community business zones. The neighborhood activity centers are typically, the zoning there is typically neighborhood business, which is smaller-scale business opportunities, and less auto-oriented business opportunities.
And then, would we expect, you know, 10 years, 15 years down the road, that, say, a community activity center would want to promote itself to a regional activity center? Wants to grow, build, change? Or are these pretty static?
Well, I wouldn't say that they're static, but I don't see the basic structure changing. The, the regional activity centers, I think, are pretty solidly emphasizing employment, and I think what will change is that we'll, we're hoping to find a way to encourage a little bit more of a mix of housing and even retail that serves those areas within those regional centers. So the character of those regional centers will change, I think, but their basic function as significant employment centers won't. And I don't, I guess there's a possibility that the, for example, the Neighborhood Activity Center at 160th and Wanita Woodville, that one has the potential, I suppose, it has enough commercially-zoned land that actually extends across 405, that that could actually grow to the point where we might say that it makes sense to designate that a community activity center rather than a neighborhood activity center, but I think we're quite a ways from that right now.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. So at this point, we'll open up the floor for comments from the public, and if you come to the podium, state your name, whether or not you're a Bothell resident, and seeing as we're pretty light on comments tonight, five minutes or so would be great.
Good evening, Planning Commission. My name is Kelly Snyder. I'm with University of Washington Bothell Campus. I'm also a resident, 20-year resident of the city of Bothell, proud resident. So I have been watching closely, kind of, the different things that have been happening with your comprehensive plan periodic code update, and when I read And when I read through the economic development plan yesterday, I thought, hmm, there's maybe an opportunity here to infuse a little bit more about what's going on in campus into some of the policies that are being proposed here in this section. Dave will send you the electronic version of this. He had copies, and somehow they didn't quite make it here today, but here it is up here for you. But I'll just generally say a few words first. So the University of Washington Bothell is close to 8,000 folks now, between students, faculty, and staff. That's nearly doubled in the last five years. It's a pretty substantial place now, lots of shopping power, lots of spending power, lots of indirect and direct impact into the community. Four years ago, the University of Washington hired a consultant called Trip Umback. And in that study that they conducted on economic impact, it said at that time that University of Washington Bothell, not Cascadia, but we can extrapolate a few things, already puts $103 million into the local economy, pretty substantial economic impact in this community. If you add in Cascadia, we estimate another $40 million a year, so $140 million of local impact from this campus. So we think we're a pretty sizable driver. If you look at the city's own CAFRA report, it's one of your accounting reports that you submit each year, it lists that University of Washington Bothell is the number-five employer by size in the, in this region, in this city. If you add Cascadia to that, we're the number-two employer right behind Phillips. So we're definitely a substantial thing going on here in the City of Bothell these days. And so when I went and read through the economic development plan, those are the glasses, not just these, but those are the glasses that I looked at. And so anytime that I saw the word "business" or "resident," I thought of students who are here, shopping, driving, eating, whatever they're doing, I thought of educational institution. It's not just about the businesses and the citizens anymore. Those are two great things, and yes, we are an employer, but we are a governmental agency. And I think that I could share those details and numbers with you, as I have, and it illustrates that we are kind of a third leg to the stool within this community. And so each of these proposals here add a little bit of language that would reflect something about the higher education institutions that you have in this community. So just for a couple of examples, if you turn to page ED5, and under the Development of Goals and Policy Actions, it's the second paragraph, last line, when I looked at residents, employees, I thought "students." So my recommendation would be to add the word "students" here. So that kind of gives you a flavor of what I was thinking. Did you find where I was talking about? Yeah? Okay. Dave pointed out a couple of changes that were made. We're in full support of the, there were two specific, or three specific changes that reflected the campus adjustments into the downtown core activity center. Totally great, that's absolutely fine. If we want to look at page ED7, under Policy EDP4, third line and fourth, or second and third line, it talks about retail, office, commercial, industrial, all sorts of different things going on here, but it doesn't talk about the higher education institutions here in your community. So I would propose that you consider adding that into this particular policy. On page ED8.
So, excuse me.
Yes.
Kelly, appreciate this. There's a lot to digest, and unfortunately, we haven't had the chance to have it and look at it. Maybe instead of going through the specific policies, we would have the opportunity over the next couple of weeks to take a look at this, so that we can provide some feedback specific to it. But if you're able to maybe keep at a higher level for some of the issues that you think are important for us to consider as we're going through it, I think it would be a better use of everyone's time.
I think, as I explained in the beginning, how I looked at these policies, you have three major key things going on in the city. You have businesses, you have residents, and then you have this amazing higher education institution here in the City of Bothell, and it has a very substantial economic impact. How do we incorporate those, that third leg of the stool into your economic development policies? And these are just some proposals, maybe not all of them are included, that's totally fine. Just hope that you can maybe see how you could incorporate some of them. That would be fantastic. And one additional thing that's not in my letter, Dave had talked about the business loop. Anytime I'm out working with businesses, or if we get visit from the city council members, it's almost the number-one thing they ask me about. When are we going to do a business loop? How are we going to get all these folks to the downtown, getting them eating? And yes, it takes 10 minutes to buy, or, you know, 20 or 15 minutes to walk to the downtown. If there were a circulator bus, that's what people always are drawn to. So even though we may not be able to afford it today, and there will probably be a multi-way partnership to make that happen, I would encourage you to keep it here, and I would encourage you to have it put into your transportation element. That is all I have for you. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Appreciate the detailed input, and we look forward to going through it.
Happy to answer. Any questions?
Any questions or comments for Ms. Snyder? So at this point, open it up for comments, thoughts, points that planning commissioners would like to make regarding either the, some of the proposed language, the comments we've heard tonight, or what you'd like to see for process? Go ahead, Mike.
Yeah, a quick question. Regarding a circulator bus loop, how much would that cost?
I have, I have no idea at all. And like I said, it was not fleshed out at all. The, one change that I would probably make, if we do keep it in there, is it shows full-size buses on that route, and I think it's probably more likely it'll be something more on the van size or minibus size, or something like a Microsoft connector-sized bus. So that's one thing that we could do graphically that would maybe let people know that we're not really talking about a, you know, a full-size transit bus.
Is the primary pivot point on that decision cost?
That's definitely going to be a big factor. And as Kelly said, it's likely that for that to happen, it's going to have to be some sort of partnership. It's, I think it's highly unlikely that we, that we'll get either Metro or Community Transit to pick that up on their own.
If it's feasible for next time, could you get just a ballpark of what, what the cost would be? Because, I mean, it's a very, I mean, I can see the merit of the idea, and if the key piece of information to decide what to do about it is cost-based, then it'd be just very interesting, even a ballpark of what the cost is, and generally, how is that paid for? Does that come from the city? Does that come from operations? I have no idea.
Yeah. I suspect that that's, that would be the subject of a fairly involved study, but I can see what I can come in terms of some ballpark ideas, and I think what's really appropriate to put in the comprehensive plan is some real direction on the city should begin conversations with UWB and Cascadia and the business parks about implementing this and exploring strategies for doing that, and then, you know, develop a study to really identify what the cost would be and how it could be paid for.
Thanks.
Others?
Peter?
Go ahead, Patrick.
Dave, on the regional activity center, we're coming short on our, I think you said we're going to be short on our population goals in the Snoleish County. Is there anything other than market conditions that are keeping, which is probably, I'm answering my own question, but is there any incentives or anything that you guys are thinking about to get the residents, or is there anything that people have told you? Has it just been that the market, we are so down, and then there just doesn't seem to want to be that first guy stepping up?
Right. The market certainly is a big part of it, but I think what we found in the downtown plan is that we had very similar zoning in downtown as we have in at least one of the business parks. It was mixed-use zoning with the RAC overlay that allowed development up to 65 feet with certain conditions. Well, one of those conditions was, I don't know if it was required, I can't remember if it was required, or definitely encouraged structured parking, and it required a certain amount of ground-floor externally-oriented commercial space. It wasn't specifically retail space, but basically that was the gist of it. And when we got to looking at what really made sense in the downtown, we realized that there are some parts of the downtown plant, downtown subarea where we didn't necessarily want or even need or even want that ground-floor commercial, that we really wanted to focus that in the core. And so I think one thing we could do, which could be an incentive, is to take a similar look at Canyon Park in particular, and look at where the opportunities are there to create that, that dense commercial core, where you do need, want that ground-floor commercial. And in other areas, allow residential-only or somehow a mix of office and residential to coexist. So basically loosen and focus the regulatory, the requirements for that development.
So that's something, some verbiage that we, maybe you could come up to, put it in this plan here to encourage that, to start that process?
We could. I guess one question would be, is it, I guess, how much do we want to get out in front of that, that future planning process? But I think we can maybe set some, some sort of framework statements. One question is, you know, to what extent those belong in economic development, and to what extent do they involve, belong in the land use element? I think the larger discussion of the growth targets is going to be part of the land use element. I think that's going to be a major focus. But I did want to bring it up here, because it does play into those activity center discussions.
Dave, you mentioned an area up on the east side of Bothell, the 228th, 45th Neighborhood Activity Center, that's a potential Neighborhood Activity Center. Would the idea ultimately with an area like that be to rezone it to, from residential to a more retail or commercial zoning to promote that sort of thing?
It would. I mean, that's the only way that you could get it, would be to at least rezone this, this corner that hasn't redeveloped yet. So the comp plan would lay the groundwork that would make that, that, you know, be the first step in doing that potentially. In general, our comp plan zoning is the same as our actual zoning. So this might be an area where we, where we deviate from that to some extent, because this actually isn't within our city limits. We could change our subarea plan, which, which sets up pre-annexation zoning, but it might just be something that we introduce as a, as a, at least a concept in the, in the comp plan. And then any developer coming in would at least have that backing if they, if they wanted to apply for a rezone. Or the city could be more proactive and actually, if this is really an idea that you think is worth pursuing, is we could, along with the comp plan, go ahead and make those changes in the, in the subarea plan, the pre-annexation zoning for the subarea.
You mentioned that there was a, kind of a desire to fill in a gap. Is that, is that one of the things that is, through this process, you're trying to do is look at areas that are currently deficient on that sort of thing and fill them in for that, and for that immediate local neighborhood?
That's how we, how we landed on this idea. We were looking at that, that map, excuse me, while I scroll back through the slides here to the map, and there was a significant gap. And if the concept of these neighborhood activity centers really is to provide areas where a significant number of people can actually walk or bike to do some convenient shopping, you do need to have them scattered throughout the area. That's not necessarily the only gap. This area, you know, could serve a certain radius, but there isn't much up in this northwest part of the city, south of 405. But this was a significant gap along the east edge of the city here. And given the topography, that being up on top of a hill, it seemed like that was at least worth, worth considering.
Thank you.
You have anything, Blake?
Yeah, Dave, on ED6, page ED6, goal number four and six in particular, it's kind of a fundamental question, and that's whether or not it's the, it's the government's role to create jobs, or the government's role to create an environment where jobs are created, you know, business environment. And I would, I would propose that goal number four, we would want to take a look at changing that to increase opportunities in the business environment for livable wage jobs. Because as I, as I read this right now, this looks like the City of Bothell is going to increase livable wage jobs. Just a suggestion. And then same thing with ED6, goal number six, to promote economic opportunity for all citizens of Bothell, especially unemployed disadvantages, and I would suggest we also put in their job creators, you know, businesses as well.
I've got to be frank, I, I felt that, reading through this, it was a lot of verbiage that was put together the last time the comp plan was, was pulled together, or potentially even many times before that the comp plan was put together. And my experience working in the economic development world, both as a consultant and as a supporting partner to it, what I know is, is that it's a very, very different economic development world than it was 10 years ago. And it seems to me that a lot of the things that are on the cutting edge of cities' opportunities to stimulate vibrant and economically viable communities seems to be missing. I thought of doing what Kelly did tonight and writing a long list. I didn't have time to get through the three or four pages worth of comments that I think that I have relative to specific sections, goals, policies, and actions. And I just want to give the heads up that I plan on doing that, and that I hope we will have a much more vibrant discussion. But a couple of things that really, really jump out to me. David, you even mentioned in your, in your talk tonight about housing and retail in the regional centers, which to me is, is something that is essential to business recruitment and business retention. Being a regional job center with high-end, high-tech jobs in the business parks, the opportunity to recruit and retain businesses by providing entertainment, social, commercial, retail opportunities in those centers, instead of across the freeway from those centers or the commute to downtown, is something that businesses appreciate and will be attracted to. And I remember the first time I came to Bothell and was touring around, I drove through the Schnitzer Business Park, or, well, what used to be the Schnitzer Business Park, and I saw all those parking spots, and I thought, what a great economic development tool, a goal of $10 a day per parking stall, and people spending money in Bothell. And it would be a great way to stimulate economic vibrancy of the community by providing opportunities for the people that are driving into our community to spend their dollars during the daytime, or extend their stay into the afternoons and evenings by providing facilities that are close to their work. And, you know, it's just one of the examples that you mentioned, that housing and retail, but I didn't see it anywhere in goals, policies, or actions, was there really anything specific to telling us how we're going to do that? Following up on Patrick's comment about setting policies, I'm absolutely firm- Following up on Patrick's comment about setting policies, I'm absolutely firm that we should be out in front of the subarea planning process by setting policies and goals, because those planners are going to come in, they're going to come to our economic development and our land use elements, and they're going to look at what our goals and policies are, and that's going to help drive the direction that they're going to move those subarea plans. And I think it's a huge opportunity for us right now to be setting some policies and some goals in place that those planners will draw from as they go through that subarea planning process. I mentioned earlier about the vibrancy of our economy, and, you know, we've got 28,000 to 30,000 jobs in these business parks. And they're huge, high-wage, high-talent jobs. They attract people from all over the world, they're exporting to all over the world. And I think that it's absolutely essential that we beef up the policies and actions in this part of the plan on how we intend to recruit and retain those businesses, and what actions are there that are going to stimulate their interest in remaining here and bringing more jobs here. Also, going back to my opening comments about what's going on in economic development these days, the opportunity to promote public-private partnerships, it's a huge tool. Both the private sector as well as the city are partners in creating opportunities for both to be successful. Private industry to build viable projects that create good opportunity, and the public sector to realize the revenue base that comes with new jobs, new permits, land sales, and the increase in tax revenue. Concepts such as industrial mixed use and eco-industrial development are where the cutting edge is. And I think that our business parks, with the opportunity to revamp from when they were established in the early 80s to where they'll be in the 2020s and 2030s, it's a huge opportunity to begin to insert some of those cutting-edge concepts into the plan. I will provide specific comments and detail, and give you a heads up that expect many from me, and I hope that we continue to have a real vibrant discussion on this topic, because today's world, as you know, the, with the tax structure that we're dealing with, with the competitive environment between cities chasing after the same retail mix, or chasing after the same tax dollars, the same grant monies, it's more and more important every year that we create a much more competitive place for businesses to come and help stimulate our economy. So that's my two cents for tonight.
Okay. I look forward to your comments, and definitely feel free to get them to me well in advance of the next session, so I can, we can incorporate those into the packet, so that everybody can review those.
Any other discussion or actions for this evening, David?
I think I've gotten good feedback on the areas that I was hoping for some feedback on. I haven't heard from everybody about the circulator, but I'm hearing that there certainly is some support for keeping that in there and fleshing it out further. The, I realize you haven't had a lot of time to think about adding this Neighborhood Activity Center. One thing I did want to, I forgot to mention about that, we're showing it actually extending outside of our planning area and outside the established urban growth boundary. But again, that's, I think, within the timeframe of this comprehensive plan, there will be serious discussions about extending the urban growth boundary in Snohomish County. So we don't think that's a deal killer there. So I think it's worth considering. And so if you can cogitate on that one and come back next time with some ideas about support or not for that, that would be great.
So I guess at this time, I need a motion to continue the public hearing on periodic plan and code update, initial review of the economic development element until May 21st. Was that the date?
That is the date for the economic development element, and I think you also need to continue the hearing to May 7th for the next element on the docket for the plan and code update.
Okay, so we'll take two motions then. One to continue the public hearing for the periodic plan and code update to May 7th. And I guess that would do it, because we'll extend the rest at that time. So just one motion is needed.
Yeah, I move that we continue the 2015 periodic plan and code update to Wednesday, May 14th.
May 7th.
I'm sorry. May 7th.
Any, all, there's any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Note that the motion passes unanimously with those commissioners present tonight. Moving down the agenda, old business. David, you provided some information in our packet.
Actually, other planners provided that information, and it's strictly just for your information, the updates of those items that you've already had hearings on, for your records.
Thank you. Reports from staff?
None.
None. Reports from members? Welcome, Eric. Glad to have you aboard.
Thank you.
Take a motion for adjournment?
Move to adjourn.
Thank you.